...center of the global knowledge economy and the leading hub of insurance technology in the world. We're home to more corporate headquarters than any other city in the southeast and home to the talented leaders and employees of those companies. Having sought innovative ways to nurture businesses over 20 years ago, Columbia today reflects progressive energy and highly desirable growth. It attracts business interests and investments from all around the globe. A laser-like focus on ensuring a business-friendly environment has resulted in Columbia being named the jewel of the South. Its results include the largest gross domestic product of any city in South Carolina, the lowest unemployment, and the steady stream of talent that emerges from its colleges and universities. Columbia experiences a steady increase in its number of residents and businesses with disposable income. There's a low business vacancy rate and phenomenal growth throughout Columbia and the surrounding region. Columbia's thriving urban core serves as home to most of the state's cultural destinations, with a core surrounded by vibrant neighborhoods and schools. Columbia's exciting riverfront is the envy of the southeast.
Building upon our history as America's first planned capital city, Columbia has a rich history in the way we plan our growth and how we are defining what a great American city should be. Our city preserves, protects, and treasures our natural resources, our historic properties. Columbia has been recognized on a number of occasions for being one of the best-planned sustainable cities in the southeast and across America. Our planning process is one that features a commitment to revitalization of downtown, a fully-developed riverfront, both large and small parks throughout our city, well-connected roadways and transportation modes, and most importantly, strong and vibrant neighborhoods. Couple that with our commitment to providing basic services that are cost-effective and of superior quality, and Columbia will continue its quest for a well-balanced, growing tax base that puts people first. Because at the end of the day, the success of our city is contingent to Columbia working its base of engaged citizens, visionary leaders, to build a capital city where citizens want to live, learn, work, and play for generations to come.
With three beautiful rivers running through the heart of the city, three interstate highways that connect the region to over 75% of the American economy, and a historically designated and well-planned urban core, Columbia is recognized as the economic engine of the South. The city's laser-like focus on the delivery of sound and sustainable infrastructure, along with its best practices and cutting-edge technology, have enabled it to manage and operate one of the largest and most modern utility systems in the South. Columbia has integrated infrastructure delivery that is coupled with the vision of establishing itself as the most walkable city in America. The city thus provides its citizens with a green, high-tech, intermodal transportation system that services and connects the entire metropolitan area. A superior network of 100 miles of bike and pedestrian-friendly connectivity supports the healthy lifestyles of Columbia's citizens and visitors, and has earned the community accolades for decades. The city's stunning tree canopy makes Columbia the longest consecutively-recognized municipality by Tree City USA. The canopy camouflages an intricate network of smart technology, green infrastructure, and renewable energy sources that serve citizens and businesses while promoting healthy living.
Columbia is an inclusive, caring, and compassionate city that embraces diversity. We provide a variety of services and resources that develop human potential and invest in the growth and development of all residents. Our citizens live in safe, sustainable neighborhoods where children are thriving, learning, and having fun. Our residents are financially and physically healthy and lead peaceful and productive lives. Our citizens are invested in the community and empowered to live their fullest potential. Columbia prides itself on engaging its citizens and providing a high quality of life with endless possibilities. From premier educational institutions to strong neighborhoods and thriving businesses, the city is well-known as an environment in which there are opportunities for all. We are home to state-of-the-art K-12 schools, a myriad of public and private institutions of higher learning, as well as a nationally-ranked technical school system. All of these opportunities empower residents to transform their lives and inspire people, young and not-so-young, to achieve their dreams. Workforce development is the hallmark of the Columbia community, coupled with a focus on successfully leveraging public and private partnerships to ensure that all residents have an opportunity to obtain skilled, high-paying jobs. High-level medical services, abundant recreational amenities, and a beautiful and safe natural environment allow citizens to live healthy and active lives.
Columbia is a capital city of endless possibilities. A balance between physical responsible government and a strategic investment has encouraged desirable private sector growth. The city has an internationally-recognized business-friendly environment that has produced a sustainable revenue stream to support reinvest in our public infrastructures, schools, neighborhoods, and our art and culture community. The city creates an atmosphere that generates rewarding employment opportunities for all. The state flagship institution of higher learning, the University of South Carolina, along with our many high-quality universities and colleges and world-class technical college system, support abundant, well-focused job training. Our many core educational facilities have attracted high-tech industry and innovative businesses that change the world.
Columbia reflects neighborhoods that are filled with historic homes, museums, parks, and natural resources. The city boasts safe, secure neighborhoods that are free from overdevelopment and other consequences of growth. Housing exists for residents in a variety of income categories and stages of life, including choices from traditional, single-family homes to tree-lined streets to high-rise urban living. The city maintains a diverse mix of housing stock, from urban development to family-oriented neighborhoods with backyard cookouts. The city protects and honors the uniqueness and character of its history. Columbia attracts employees and families that desire a safe, sustainable, and accessible community. It has distinguished itself by managing growth to protect and improve its valued quality of life. Sustainable development has been carefully blended into the city. Careful expansion and redevelopment have made Columbia a pedestrian-friendly, livable, Long considered a leader in municipal service delivery, the city of Columbia embraces new technologies and is committed to the highest level of customer service and constituent service for residents and visitors. We operate in an environment that is business-friendly to promote the growth of our small and large businesses. Our practices are solution-oriented. Our business processes have been streamlined to ensure an effective and efficient approach to address the needs of our business community. Tools for citizen engagement are utilized to empower our residents to interact and access city services in an efficient, timely, and helpful manner. The city of Columbia staff implements best practices that are on the cutting edge of municipal governance. The use of technology allows city staff to increase productivity and decrease response time in addressing customer requests and concerns.
Columbia has captured the new American dream. We're 250 years strong, and we welcome the future with open arms. Everybody take a look now, what could it be? The future is bright for you, them, and me. We got a vision, oh say can you see? It's 2036, it's soda city. Everybody take a look now, what could it be? The future is bright for you, them, and me. We got a vision, oh say can you see? It's 2036, it's soda city. Soda city is full of showstoppers. Flood tried to get in our way, could not block us. We're envisioning a city that's the envy of the whole land. We stand tall, success is what we clothe in. No city finer than the metro. You want the vision for the city, man, let's go. We will attract and retain top talent. Plan together, paint a masterpiece from the palette. Connect our community, sustainable and sound. Resources that'll keep our residents empowered. We all prosper, economy strong. Our neighborhood's fresh and we all belong. And finally, if you hear 50 years old one, our service to you is gonna be second to none. Until the vision comes to pass, we won't stop. And here to infinity, we famously hide. Everybody take a look now, what could it be? The future is bright for you, them, and me. We got a vision, oh say can you see? It's 2036, it's soda city. Everybody take a look now, what could it be? The future is bright for you, them, and me. We got a vision, oh say can you see? It's 2036, it's soda city. Everybody take a look now, what could it be? The future is bright for you, them, and me. We got a vision, oh say can you see? It's 2036, it's soda city. Everybody take a look now, what could it be? The future is bright for you, them, and me. We got a vision, oh say can you see? It's 2036, it's soda city.
By 2036, Columbia has captured the new American dream. While embracing our 250-year-rich history, we enthusiastically welcome the future. We are proud of our soul, our unique character, our diversity, and our human potential. We stand as a city for all people. As a center of commerce, technology, and education, we have defined our city as one full of vitality and inclusion with a charming and cosmopolitan feel. We will create our desired future. We will continue our success.
Columbia, South Carolina is the center of the global knowledge economy and the leading hub of insurance technology in the world. We're home to more corporate headquarters than any other city in the southeast and home to the talented leaders and employees of those companies. Having sought innovative ways to nurture businesses over 20 years ago, Columbia today reflects progressive energy and highly desirable growth. It attracts business interests and investments from all around the globe. A laser-like focus on ensuring a business-friendly environment has resulted in Columbia being named the jewel of the South. Its results include the largest gross domestic product of any city in South Carolina, the lowest unemployment, and the steady stream of talent that emerges from its colleges and universities. Columbia experiences a steady increase in its number of residents and businesses with disposable income. There's a low business vacancy rate and phenomenal growth throughout Columbia and the surrounding region. Columbia's thriving urban core serves as home to most of the state's cultural destinations, with a core surrounded by vibrant neighborhoods and schools. Columbia's exciting riverfront is the envy of the southeast.
Building upon our history as America's first planned capital city, Columbia has a rich history in the way we plan our growth and how we are defining what a great American city should be. Our city preserves, protects, and treasures our natural resources, our historic properties. Columbia has been recognized on a number of occasions for being one of the best-planned sustainable cities in the southeast and across America. Our planning process is one that features a commitment to revitalization of downtown, a fully-developed riverfront, both large and small parks throughout our city, well-connected roadways and transportation modes, and most importantly, strong and vibrant neighborhoods. Couple that with our commitment to providing basic services that are cost-effective and of superior quality, and Columbia will continue its quest for a well-balanced, growing tax base that puts people first. Because at the end of the day, the success of our city is contingent to Columbia working its base of engaged citizens, visionary leaders, to build a capital city where citizens want to live, learn, work, and play for generations to come.
With three beautiful rivers running through the heart of the city, three interstate highways that connect the region to over 75% of the American economy, and a historically designated and well-planned urban core, Columbia is recognized as the economic engine of the South. The city's laser-like focus on the delivery of sound and sustainable infrastructure, along with its best practices and cutting-edge technology, have enabled it to manage and operate one of the largest and most modern utility systems in the South. Columbia has integrated infrastructure delivery that is coupled with the vision of establishing itself as the most walkable city in America. The city thus provides its citizens with a green, high-tech, intermodal transportation system that services and connects the entire metropolitan area. A superior network of 100 miles of bike and pedestrian-friendly connectivity supports the healthy lifestyles of Columbia's citizens and visitors, and has earned the community accolades for decades. The city's stunning tree canopy makes Columbia the longest consecutively-recognized municipality by Tree City USA. The canopy camouflages an intricate network of smart technology, green infrastructure, and renewable energy sources that serve citizens and businesses while promoting healthy
This actually is a really good format, though.
Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Per.
Mr. Bedura? Ms. Devine? Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor Benjamin?
Reverend McDowell, you mind opening us up with a word of prayer?
Yes. Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, for all that you've done for us for this day and for all of the gracious possibilities you've allowed us to share and be with us now as we discuss the workings of our city. Lord, we pray that thou would sensitize us to your will and to your way and allow us, in a very positive way, to make decisions that are life-changing. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Mr. Baker.
Mr. Mayor, the first item, actually, this financial report was emailed and is on the website. Financial, the Finance Committee's staff is here to answer any questions, should there be any.
Sure, I think we just determined as a matter of protocol if there are any live questions we had for Ms. Alonso. This may be an opportunity to ask some questions that were not answered previously.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to welcome Jan back to our council meetings. It's a delight to have some numbers in front of us. I have sent the staff some questions before the meeting, and Mr. Palin has answered most of my questions. I wanted to know the difference in the assessed values for '15 and '16. I was trying to compare to see if the flood had reduced our assessed values, and I believe we were actually up a little bit, 3.5 is what it was. And then I had some questions about properties that we've been looking at for the last couple of years, and wanted to know if they were on the tax rolls yet. And Mr. Palin is doing some research on that, so I'll look forward to that. It's always good to have you with us to bring us the numbers of the city, and they are looking good.
But you have no other questions?
I don't have any particular question.
Anybody else?
I'm reserving all mine till June 30th.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is our federal legislative update and outlook by Mr. Ralph.
Just.
I practiced it, Ralph, and it still didn't come out.
Ralph, to fill the record, would you pronounce your name as you?
Uh, Garbushian.
Sorry.
That's a good southern name. All right.
Well, thank you. It's good to be in Columbia, and, and I'll try to go through our official PowerPoint presentation quickly so that leave time, plenty of time for you to all ask questions. So this is just a little bit about who we are, and they, we've included some photographs of ourselves, but we've worked for the City of Columbia for over twenty years and actually predating, predating my time with the firm, so going back to the nineteen eighties. We're a small firm that, that works only for local governments and, and focus only on, on the issues that, that base local governments in Washington. So a quick overview of two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen, and, and we'll start with some of the successes, and, and there were some successes over, over that period. Congress passed a five-year highway transit reauthorization bill, which, which A gave states in, in metropolitan areas some certainty going through FY twenty twenty, and, and one of the, the nice things in that bill was we were able to increase sub-allocation of highway funds to the Columbia urbanized area, and that will increase incrementally every year, keeping in mind that the bulk of highway programs continue to go to the state DOT. Were able to preserve the transportation alternatives program, a small but important program that, that funds bike paths, sidewalks, safe routes to schools, maintain the, the federal transit program intact, and, and more specifically, we're able to maintain operating assistance for CMRTA. In the Senate, and we're facing this challenge again, but there was a spectrum auction bill, and we were able to fight back an amendment that would have preempted all local zoning authority over cellphone facilities in the Commerce Committee. Also in the Commerce Committee, in the context of FAA reauthorization, there were efforts to include language in there that would have preempted all local regulation of drones, and that's kind of an emerging field, able to turn that back, although we'll face that again in the context of FAA reauthorization. The mayor worked on this directly. Were able to secure twenty million dollars in direct assistance in CDBG disaster recovery assistance, twenty million in direct funding to the city, which otherwise would have gone through the state.
Ralph, if I may stop you, I think one of the things while we're on the subject would be very, very helpful for us is we really need you guys to push to get the agencies to work with all these properties and things. We're stuck here because of Matthew and other things, and now we've got people who, you know, here it is sixteen months later, and we can't give them an answer. We can't help them because then it takes them out of the, the loop. So whatever you guys can do in Washington to push that, that, that these applications and everything move forward, I know everybody on our staff would be very, very appreciative.
Thank you. We will. Thank you.
Thanks.
Were able, in, in the face of pretty steep austerity, and that, and this has been for a few years, able to preserve funding for core local government grant programs, including CDBG home, homeland security grants, and local law enforcement assistance. Cover a few setbacks, and there were setbacks. Congress enacted a reauthorization of the Internet Tax Freedom Act, and it was the Permanent Internet Tax Freedom Act, so that, that is now the permanent law of the land. The Supreme Court upheld FCC ruling, rulemaking that preempts local authority as it relates to co-location on cellphone towers.
What, what does that exactly mean? I, I didn't get the draft.
Sure. The FCC issued, issued a right, a proposed rule and then a final rule that, that requires you, in most broadly speaking, without getting into details, that on any existing tower, and existing tower is pretty broadly defined, you have to approve co-location within certain parameters, and those parameters are, are pretty large.
Pretty large.
And that went, City of Arlington, Texas challenged that. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the FCC, so that is now the law of the land, which could have some, I'll get to that, but that could have some ramifications down the road.
Yes.
And then we, we saw unfortunately little movement on sales tax fairness. That's the ability to collect sales taxes for remote retailers, and I think we're unlikely to see much movement on that in Congress, but, but a little bit of good news there is that in the federal courts, there has been movement, I, I think, that, that favors the local government position. There was a Supreme Court decision, and Justice Kennedy, who was on the court in nineteen ninety-two when they ruled on the Quill decision, and, and he wrote a concurring opinion where he outlined the fact that he thought Quill was a flawed decision back in nineteen ninety-two, even though he voted for it, and intervening time has confirmed his doubts, and should a case be brought to the Supreme Court, he might be ready to overturn it. And then the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals in Colorado issued a sales tax ruling and, and said, well, we're bound by the Quill decision because that's a Supreme Court decision, but here's all the reasons we think that's a bad decision. And in response to that, several states, most notably South Dakota, have passed laws requiring the collection of sales taxes by remote retailers, and, and the intention of those laws is to be sued and create a court, a court case.
Take it to the Supreme Court.
Yes. So, so that's, I think, where we'll see movement on sales tax fairness. I'll cover this quickly, but it's, oh, and I'm sorry, the, I can tell you the numbers. They seem to have disappeared from those pie charts. I'm sorry about that. But, but this is important because it's, it's going to affect the dynamics in the Senate in particular. The Senate, the Republicans maintained control of the Senate. They lost two seats, and, and so the Senate is now fifty-two Republicans and forty-eight Democrats, if you include the two Democrats who caucus with, with the, the two independents who caucus with the Democrats, and that, that's going to be an important number, and I'll, I'll get to that a little bit later. In the House, and I'm sorry again, the, the, the numbers have disappeared from there, but the, the Democrats were able to gain six seats. They went from one hundred eighty-eight to one hundred ninety-four. Nevertheless, the Republicans have two hundred forty-one seats, and that, that is a historically large majority. So despite losing six seats, they maintain a historically large majority. So looking ahead to two thousand and eighteen, which, which I know it seems a little bit early to be, to be doing that, but again, this will impact the dynamics, particularly in the Senate. As, as the case every two years, thirty-three Senate seats will be up for election. Eight of those thirty-three are held by Republicans, twenty-five are held by Democrats, and, and ten of those twenty-five Democrats will be running for reelection in a state that President Trump won. One Republican, Dean Heller of Nevada, will be running for reelection in a state that Hillary Clinton won. So, and, and you can look on that list on the right, and, and just as the fifty-two forty-eight, that's a slim margin, will impact the dynamics in the Senate, so will that list on the right.
So would term limits.
So these are just some key dates, some of which have already passed, but they're, they're particularly important. January through March, and I think that you can now amend that to say April and May, the Senate will be pretty well consumed with confirmation hearings and confirmation votes. On March fifteenth, the suspension of the debt limit expires. A month and a half later, the short-term funding bill that's keeping the federal government open for FY twenty, we're five months into FY twenty seventeen, and the federal government is running on a continuing resolution. That continuing resolution expires at the end of April. Also, in March, when Congress comes back from its recess next week, they will start the FY twenty eighteen appropriations process. They're, they're, and I'll, I got into that, but they're also working on the repeal of the Affordable Care Act, potentially a, an ambitious comprehensive tax reform bill and some major entitlement reform, so, so they've, they've got a full plate. Not long after all of that, in July, aviation programs expire, and at the end of September, the National Flood Insurance Program expires. Reauthorizing that will be a challenge, and FY twenty seventeen ends and FY twenty eighteen begins.
Ralph, what, what do you hear around Capitol Hill about the debt ceiling being raised? Pushback from the Republicans on that now that Trump's in?
Yes. Certain, certain, you know, now that, that Congress and the White House are controlled by the same party, historically, that's been a recipe for a pretty easy, you know, increase of the debt limit or suspension of the debt limit. I, I think particularly among the most conservative House Republicans, there might still be some resistance to, to doing something about that.
One of those no votes for raising the ceiling is now his budget director.
Yes, yes. Mr. Mulvaney was always an opponent of, of raising that. So, so it's going to be, the suspension expires on March fifteenth. Congress, the Treasury Department can probably do a little bit of this and a little bit of that until there's a point where they have to default on some payment, so. That, now, that's going to be very interesting to see how that plays out, and I'm not sure anyone is quite sure how it does. So some key issues in the one hundred fifteenth Congress. I have budget at the top. The sequester is, is back for FY twenty eighteen, and, and the administration is, is going to come out, that was reported today officially, they're going to come out with a budget proposal on March fourteenth, and they're reportedly preparing an austere budget proposal, so, so the pressure on non-defense discretionary spending will continue. Comprehensive tax reform is, is, I think, one of the areas where there's some agreement, some broad agreement between the administration and, and Congress, and that's, that'll be a major issue. Infrastructure, there's a lot of talk. So far, it's just that, talk of a major infrastructure package. I mentioned aviation programs expire in July, so aviation reauthorization, and then reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program. I, I think local control will be a major issue. Telecommunications, right-of-way zoning, and then, of course, sales tax fairness. I think criminal justice reform still has a lot of broad bipartisan support, particularly in the Senate, and will remain an issue, as will grant funding, both in the terms of, in terms of pressure on all non-defense discretionary spending and also sanctuary cities and, and efforts to withhold federal grants from sanctuary cities. And then regulations. The Obama administration had a pretty ambitious regulatory agenda, and I think the current administration and the current congressional leadership has a pretty ambitious deregulatory agenda, so tracking that and seeing what that means for the city.
Did you say ambitious?
Yes.
Very ambitious.
Yes, yes. And, and, and a lot of the votes that we've seen in Congress so far have been to overturn some regulations using the Congressional Review Act, Congressional Review Act. So, so the agenda for the first hundred days, the first hundred days ends on April twenty ninth, coincidentally, the day after FY twenty seventeen spending expires, and also probably around the time where the Treasury Department will start running out of the tricks it can play to avoid a default, so that, I think, the end of April is going to be an interesting time, and it's important to note that there's a two-week congressional recess in the middle of April. So they'll come back from that and come into the last week of April, potentially facing several cliffs, as they've come to be called in Washington. But the agenda for the first one hundred days, Speaker Ryan and congressional Republicans campaigned on an ambitious and detailed plan. In their campaign blueprint, it was called a better way, our vision for a confident America. President Trump ran on, perhaps in an equally ambitious, but, but much less detailed plan. In, in some instances, the two plans are aligned. In other cases, they conflict, and I think a lot of the, a lot of what we'll see resolved in the coming months will be resolving those differences. So I tried to put this in, in descending order of agreement and thus likelihood of, of action, agreement and thus likelihood of action, agreement between the administration and the congressional leadership. Top of the list, and they've already started efforts, is repeal, and then with question marks replaced, repair. I'm, I'm not sure that they've coalesced around what exactly they're going to do, the Affordable Care Act. Comprehensive tax reform. The reports are that, that staff, and particularly in the House, has already started writing that bill. Immigration, and particularly sanctuary cities. Discretionary spending, and that, and that's an ambitious agenda. I think that the sequester will be eliminated for defense discretionary spending, and, and we'll see increases in defense spending. We'll see increases in domestic security spending, but the budget that the administration is looking to put out on March fourteenth is reportedly modeled on the Heritage Foundation's model budget, and, and that is, that is a budget that calls for major cuts. I haven't seen a specific number, and I think that they'll, they'll, they're waiting to see what the administration is going to propose in their, in their FY eighteen budget proposal, which is going to be a slim budget, they say, but I think that that'll be the starting point for what that top-line number is for, for defense discretionary.
I think most of us have seen the Heritage Foundation's recommendations, and to say that they could be devastating to cities across America is would be another statement.
I, I think that that's, I, I, just, just a few examples of what the Heritage Foundation budget, and this gets back to why I showed you those Senate charts and that fifty-two forty-eight margin in the Senate. As of right now, appropriations bills need sixty votes to advance in the Senate, so whatever the administration proposes, proposes will be just that, a proposal and the starting point for discussions. But nevertheless, it would eliminate CDBG, eliminate home, eliminate the Economic Development Administration, eliminate the Federal Transit Administration and the Federal Transit Program, and you kind of get the idea of where that would go.
You had the list in your report a couple of weeks ago. It was shocking.
It, it is a little bit shocking, and.
Let's, let's throw up the flag when it actually happens. I don't think it's going to get that far.
And then just the rest of the agenda, regulatory reform, entitlement reform, and I might move entitlement reform a little bit higher up, but I had to put them in some order, but, but, you know, the president ran on a platform of protecting Social Security and Medicare. He never mentioned Medicaid, the Children's Health Insurance Program, nutrition assistance programs, and, and Speaker Ryan has made it clear that he wants to make some pretty drastic changes to those programs. So, so in an effort to, to bottom line it, and, and what does it mean for cities in the City of Columbia? I, I think comprehensive tax reform is one area where there's a lot of agreement between the administration and the congressional leadership, so preserving the tax exemption for municipal bonds, I think, will be a priority challenge for local governments. I would add to that the low-income housing tax credit, the historic preservation tax credit, the new Marcus tax credit, so, so some work there. The second biggest challenge will be preserving funding for core local government grant programs in the face of, of serious pressure on non-defense discretionary spending. The repeal of the Affordable Care Act, entitlement reform, and cuts to other programs could create long-term challenges for local budgets, and why I mention other programs, just for example, the social services block grant, which does not provide any money directly to the city, but which does provide funding to some of your social service providers. If that's eliminated, that could create some budget pressures for the city, certainly. And then we'll have to closely track regulatory reform, and I think keeping eye on everything but keeping a particularly close eye on the FCC, where I think we're going to say, face some serious challenges to local control, and we're, and we're already seeing that. And then, infrastructure. I, I, I put a question mark there. The president ran on the, on a platform of spending a trillion dollars on infrastructure over ten years. That's, that includes everything based on, and it, and he never came out with a detailed plan, but he always mentioned aviation ports, schools, the power grid, highways, bridges. The list never included transit notably, and that's important to note. But just to put one trillion dollars over ten years in perspective, and, and, and the reason I put it at the bottom of my list of, of likelihood, the federal highway and transit program is about fifty billion dollars a year, so a trillion dollars over ten years is, is a hundred billion dollars a year, so we'd be talking about double the highway and transit program, and I think the congressional leadership is, is perhaps not as enthusiastic about, about doing something like that. What we have seen is, is a proposal to use federal tax credits to leverage a trillion dollars in private sector investment in infrastructure. How that would work exactly isn't, isn't clear, but, but that's, that's the best we have to go on, and, and of course, that approach has some, has some criticisms.
Sure. And we've, of course, been making the case that, knowing the president is a developer, I'm sure there is a, a significant interest in tax credits, but the way in which the vast majority of infrastructure has been delivered in this country is using taxes at, uh, municipal bonds, and making sure that we protect that and, and looking at any type of tax credit proposals being complimentary to the way we've done things for the last well over one hundred years, or certainly since it's been codified in nineteen thirteen. The, um, but overall, if I remember correctly, overall, infrastructure needs several trillion is what we expect, right, in the country, across the country, right?
I forget the exact number, but you obviously, you know, three trillion or four trillion.
Number, so.
And when you look at water. And when you look at water and wastewater, you know, that's a particularly high number. A lot of those systems were built, you know, 50 to 60 years ago, and, and our need of, our need of renewal. So, so I just, I, I just, we'll have to wait and see on infrastructure. I, I think it's, it's wise for, for any local government to have some projects. You never know what could happen. So I'd say identify some projects that could benefit from an infrastructure package, but, but we'll have to wait and see what happens there. And on that, any questions or comments?
Good to see you, Ralph.
Yeah, it's good to see you. It's good to be in Columbia. Thank you.
I never, I never let the opportunity pass, Ralph, without telling counsel and anyone else who, who listened, the great work that Capital Edge does for us, and, on behalf of the city and, and Washington, you guys are here long before I ever got here, and, and maybe even proceeded the relationship, uh, the relationship proceeded, proceeded to Sam's service on council. But Ralph and Joy and the entire team in Washington represents us so well. You guys did a great job, always making us look like we're out, out, you know, outkicking our coverage, out punching our weight. And, uh, so we appreciate your good work, really do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ralph, in the midst of excellent, certainly appreciate your delivery and the content of that. But the challenge is, as it trickles down from Washington to Columbia, seems to be volumous in our understanding of what's going to take place as we, as Washington builds a budget. As there has been many, many obstacles, the challenges for us are going to be great. And I say that in a very casual way, but in a real strong way. It's going to, it's going to impact us in ways that we don't know yet. Just to cut right to the chase. Knowing what we know about perhaps what's going to happen, what are some, say, priorities that we really need to hone in on that would at least allow us to see the ball before it hits us in the face?
Sure. And, and, and the reason I put tax reform at the top is, is A, I think that, that the stars are aligning for, for some serious progress to be made. Tax reform is difficult. There's a reason it hasn't happened since 1986, but I think the stars are aligning. And, and when you look at the tax exemption for municipal bonds, absent that, I think the city would be hard-pressed to make basic infrastructure investments. But, but right after that, I put core local government grant programs. I, I think that, that we, we'll have our work cut out for us, but that we can preserve programs such as CDBG and Home. But it's going to take a concerted effort by the city and, but by all cities to preserve those programs. And then the, the bigger budget pressures from cuts to other programs that don't necessarily benefit the city, but the city, that the city could be called on the backfill. I think that that's certainly a challenge.
While we may not be unanimous in all issues in the federal budget, is it fair to say we're all of one mind on, on the muni-bond tax exemption? Is that fair? I, I, I think we probably need to send a letter, a joint letter, maybe from all of us, at least to our federal representatives, just very directly to, to Mr. Wilson and Mr. Clyburn and our senators, just making it crystal clear that we need them and we're watching them on this issue.
Absolutely, we can, we can do that. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you. I was going to allude to that. If I, I could attest that, you know, over the years, one of the things that your office has done well has been when there has been transition in the leadership in Washington. And I think we would rely on, on, on you and your office to, for example, the communications with the, with the leadership from, from South Carolina, that you, you know, if there's anything, we can help you in that end as well. But, but I think we will rely on you and your office to, to do that and make that happen. We have always kind of figured out a way to communicate throughout with our representatives, even one-on-ones or group conversations. I would ask you to look into that and see if, well, I, I know it's going to be necessary, but at least help us with the timing on, on that. If necessary, you know, we take some trips and...
And I think we're going to be calling...
Yeah, when that happens, we, they tend to hear our message and, and do what they can to, to help us regardless of the, of the, um, any particular side. It's about taking care of the home state.
And I think we're going to be calling on you all a lot more this year than we have in recent years.
Pack your bags.
Because you all are, are the best and most important lobbyists.
Yeah.
Ralph, I will be there on March the 12th through the 15th with the National League of Cities and be on the Hill on the 13th. So if you've got any particular things you want me to say to our delegation, send me an email.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll prepare background and talking points
Okay.
for your visits, and, and Joy or I will, will, can staff you on those visits as well. We can also arrange your, we will also, we can set up your appointments as well.
Okay. I think MASC is going to do that, but I will check.
Okay.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our next item is our state lobbyist, Kyle Michelle. Business license legislation.
Thank you.
Mr. Michelle.
Mr. Baker, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council. I come before you today because it is an opportune time for you to talk to your delegation. And Mr. Duval recommended that I come and give counsel an update on the business license bill that is making its, well, is pending on the House floor right now. My, uh, my challenge today was made much easier by Cindy Scoppi's piece in the paper today, which outlined very ably the failures and shortcomings of the bill that is pending on the floor today. In short, this bill was started, as we discussed back in January, to try to bring some standardization and centralization to the way that businesses have to pay their business license taxes. In the end, it ended up going quite far afield from where it started, with the inclusion of a number of exemptions for certain businesses, which would, to remain revenue-neutral, cause everyone, if we were to stay revenue-neutral in the city of Columbia, the information that I got from Mr. Palin indicates that we would have to raise business license taxes on everyone 53%. There would be an $8.3 million shortfall if the bill passed as written. So it is time for council to express their concern with our delegation. There are six representatives that represent parts of the city of Columbia and four senators. It's not in the Senate right now, so you would stick to the six representatives, Rutherford, Hart, Finley, Smith, Bernstein, Howard, who we all know well. And hopefully, council will be able to attend the city of Columbia legislative reception tomorrow night at the Art Museum at 6 o'clock. And hopefully, our legislative delegation will be there, and we can have that conversation with them there then. I was at the State House until I came over here, and the House had, I think the House adjourned right around 2 o'clock, but then the Senate came in at 2 o'clock. Today, the House took up this bill and adjourned debate on this bill and a sort of companion bill, which would also affect the municipal association. And they adjourned debate on that until March 1st. We were asking if they would adjourn debate until March the 8th, but March 1st was fine. There's an effort going on to, by, being led by the municipal association, to draft some strike-and-replace language and/or amendments to return the bill to its original purpose without the extraneous provisions. Primarily, those provisions are granting these certain exemptions and exceptions from the business license tax to various different types of businesses.
Which ones are those?
The, the most, the, the ones that cause actually the most fiscal impact, and I think Mr. Palin is here and will jump in, he may not be. There we go. Are the exemption of insurance policies, property home and auto. Insurance proceeds would be exempted. And then the, there was another class of insurance businesses that would be exempted. One of the, one of the more, I think, I think that the intention was one thing, but the effect was another, where if your, if your business is loca, if your primary, if your home office is located outside of the jurisdiction, so our purpose is Columbia, then you would get a 25% reduction on your business license tax. So as was pointed out this morning, that would mean that Walmart, we'd get a 25% reduction on their business license tax for a company here in the city of Columbia. But the, the, the local retailer, the, I'm blanking on the name of the gift shop at the top of the street, the woman that, that Martha Suds still owns, that would, that, any, any business that was here...
Uptown.
Uptown Gifts would have to pay 100%. So it benefits the out-of-city corporations to the detriment of the in-city corporations. So, the, um, the, that was the one that sticks out, and the insurance ones stick out. There were also some other, um, there were some other exceptions made that were sort of random for childcare agencies. If you receive federal funding, you would have a 25% or, or a discount of some, I think it's 25% of your business license tax. But if you run a childcare or daycare service that does not receive any federal funding, you would not receive any discount on that. So, it's, it is a hodgepodge of exemptions that would cause, if we kept, if we kept the same municipal tax, I'm sorry, business license tax rates, we would see a drop of $8.3 million in business license tax revenue at the city of Columbia. So what we're asking is to restore the bill to its original intent, which was to streamline and standardize the process among all cities. And one of the things that the business community is, is asking for that, that is a reasonable ask is, once we get our initial business license tax, I'm sorry, business license permit, once you get your, once you're registered the first year, which you always have to do in person, that we be able to do renewals online. And we would like to be able to do those renewals online for all cities. And we would like to have the date that it has to be done for all cities, the same date every year. Those are reasonable requests, so that people who own an HVAC company, for example, don't have to go keep up with Forest Acres and City of Columbia, West Colum, or, or West Columbia, Casey, all the different, Richland County, they don't have to have all those, they don't have to keep up with a, a different set of, of business license deadlines and a different set of business license requirements and classes. They want to be, they want to be classified the same in every city. We've been supportive of that. There's been some disagreement over who would operate and own that portal. And that disagreement led to some of the consternation that ended up in the bill the way it is.
I think the, the issue that I've heard from a lot of independent folks is people who are consulting or run a business but don't have, it's their own equipment, it's their own, it's not their businesses, are being required to go pay business property tax on property they don't own or don't have, because it's a requirement of the business license. And there seemed to be some confusion the way that law is, is written and, and enforced. So I mean, I think that's something that we, as we're addressing every issue, if we're going to make a, a change, we need to make sure we, we address that.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's in the state legislation. Roger Myers is here and could answer those specific questions, and maybe the city of Columbia could look at that as well. I know that when I pay my business license tax in the city of Columbia every year, I have to give them the receipt that I have paid my personal property tax in Richland County.
But if you don't have it...
If you don't have any personal property, you don't have a receipt to give them to say you didn't pay.
Right, and you file tax returns, which is what I talked to somebody about. They showed me three years' worth of state and federal and previous business license. How, you can't produce something you don't have.
That, that's not a requirement in the statewide business license.
It's a require, no, it's not, it's not part of the bill. This is a city of Columbia issue.
It might be a city of Columbia, but it's not a requirement everywhere.
Don't turn around looking for Roger. Roger said I'm... The, uh, no, it's, it's, I guess what, what you both are saying is right. If it's a local issue, it's a local issue. It's not to be standardized in the state law. So this is not the, the remedy.
The city of Columbia, in cooperation with Richland County, somebody back here will tell me if I'm not right about this. My memory is that about five years ago, one of the things that we did in cooperation with Richland County...
Not, you're not, you're not wrong, just, you're just digressing.
Required that, so that we could get those, help them get their property taxes. But that does need to be addressed. So this is the, so this is the, the update. The good news is that it was carried over today. There are many, many voices in opposition to this bill at the State House, but we need many, many voices in opposition to the bill, so that people understand that it's way outside the boundaries of what would be acceptable to cities and towns, as written.
Kyle, one of the major points that I, I think that this council and all city councils in the state of South Carolina need to understand is this is a, this will take away the business license and authority from this council and give it to the Secretary of State's office.
That is, to me, well, I, I think the money issues are always the biggest. To me, the, the second biggest is that. That if a local government has a business license tax, the local government should have the authority to administer the business license tax. The bill as written would take that authority away from the cities and give it to the state. The Secretary of State's the office they've chosen to house it. And that is just, to me, not acceptable.
As, as I recall the, the original recommendations a couple of years ago, that, that authority was never considered for, for the state. That was not, that was not one of the issues at all.
That was, that was not an issue at all.
Right. So, I, when I read, I think a draft or something on that, I, I couldn't understand how that, how that got there either. If that does in fact happen, then, then I think municipalities such as ours would be grossly handicapped. And, and then financially impacted, you know, so.
Local governments are raising their voices on this. There are eight, there are only eight counties, I believe, that have a business license tax. But counties will end up suffering if local governments hand back to them responsibilities that they're now paying for.
So then we need to have some dialogue with our...
Bernstein, Smith, Finley, Howard.
Sooner than later, right?
Sooner rather than later.
We've, we've got that opportunity tomorrow night. The, the city of Columbia is sponsoring the legislative reception tomorrow. And I, I'd like to remind the city council members here that, that this is not a reception for us, this is a working session. We need to, to have two or three bullet points in our minds and, and know the inside of, of 3650, so that we can, while they are sipping, talk to them about how it will be $8.3 million and require a 53% increase in business license, as we shake their hands and welcome them to our reception. So I hope all of you will come tomorrow night and help us. I also would hope that we could get the support of our Columbia Chamber of Commerce on, on this. This, this is a major attack on local governments and small businesses in South Carolina. And if, if the chamber is to represent business people, they need to represent the small business people as well as the big business people. It's the big, big boys that have the lobbyists in the lobby that are benefiting from this attack. The other point is that we don't have in South Carolina a very good track record of letting the state legislature handle municipal affairs without taking it... without taking it off the top. You look at the local government fund. I was the lobbyist that negotiated that in 1990. It was a great thing. Senator Waddell wanted to simplify the collection of nine taxes, and we did that with Governor Hodges' approval, that everything would be fine. It worked fairly well for a couple of years, and now it is woefully undefunded. It costs the city of Columbia $1 million a year in the undefunding of the local government fund. We can't let this thing go unchallenged. We need to work tomorrow night. We need to get on the telephone and call the people that represent us to make sure that they understand how much this will hurt the city of Columbia.
Time and again, on the federal level and the state level, some of the tax reform measures and the issues that we're talking about, the state capel, our unfunded mandates and the federal government and state government not always exercising the fiscal discipline that they should, passing those responsibilities on to the cities and counties. And really, we speak in these formal terms, passing it on to our local taxpayers and ratepayers. And because the resources have to come from somewhere, and we've got to make sure that our messaging is clear and that we push back and push back hard every step of the way. And then, when necessary, we need to engage our constituents to also share the same message. But it will require very active advocacy. So Kyle, some of those message points, making sure we have those ASAP would be very helpful for tomorrow evening.
We'll have those for tomorrow night. Three other things, very quick.
Before tomorrow night?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to have mine before tomorrow night. If there's something you have...
I can bring something tonight at 6:00.
Yeah, tonight would be preferable.
The... This piece should have been included in your packet for the work session, which has the answers to those questions. This is put out by the Municipal Association last week.
It's in here.
This bill just passed on... Passed out of committee on Wednesday. So we're taking quick action. So this bill has the talking points. And Councilman Rickman, here on the beginning, at two-thirds of the way down on the first page, are the different exemptions that are bulleted here in this piece. The... I wanted to follow up on a couple of other very small things from our earlier time together. The Municipal Tax Relief Act. There were some questions back in January when I was before the council on the Municipal Tax Relief Act. One of the questions was, from Councilman Rickman, was would it apply to 4% property, 6% property, or 10% property? Moving to the Municipal Tax Relief Act, if the county wanted to pass an up to 1% sales tax for capital items with a 20% rollback to property tax or more, 20% minimum, would it apply to 4% property, 6% property, 10% property? The answer is, it would apply to whatever the local government decided to apply it to. You could apply it to all 6%, all 10%. You could do whatever you wanted to do. That was one question. Another question was what the impact of the revenue putting appropriation on the line at the Criminal Justice Academy, what impact would that have on the cities? And that would have no impact on the cities. We don't pay for our law enforcement officers to be trained at the CJA today. They are funded by fees and check-offs, and they would like more stable funding. And the Municipal Association has agreed, and other cities have agreed, to help them get that stable funding so that we can have a stable CJA, so that Criminal Justice Academy, so that they can continue to train our law enforcement officers as they have in the past. The last item on my tick list, since I was coming before you and I said, "Great, I'll get these issues aired", is that counsel asked us to look for ways to work for some state funding on city projects. And I'm happy to report that Councilman Davis and I have been working on trying to get some state funding for one of the critical North Columbia projects that the city's been working on for a number of years. Harlem Heights Drainage Project.
Which one?
Harlem Heights Drainage Project.
All right.
Any questions or anything else I can provide?
Now, just those reduced talking points, Kyle, and thanks. We're going to be busy.
We are busy.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're going to be busy as well. Just buttressing your efforts. And I think let's stay in constant contact as we have been. And we need a full house tomorrow, pushing the legislative buttons and staying on them over the next several weeks.
Yes.
Thank you, Kyle.
Good. Thanks.
Who have you been in contact for our delegation already?
All of them. We sent a letter in today opposing this. And then I've talked personally today. I think I spoke with Representative Finley and Representative... I talked to Representative Bales, but he's not in the city of Columbia. But we've sent... We're sending messages into all of them and button-holing them.
To all the delegation?
All the delegation, right. They just need to... When they're in the chamber talking to their fellow representatives, they need to say, "Man, I am getting beat up on all sides from this from my city governments." That's what they need to say to themselves. So you can't talk to them too much.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks alike, Kyle.
I'll have the... I'll have talking points at 6:00.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our work session agenda. The EPA Brownsville briefing has been withdrawn from this agenda.
Do you want to make a nice, long motion for executive session?
So move.
Not the way we do it anymore, y'all. Thank you, Mr. Duval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move. We go into executive session for discussion on negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to 30-4878, receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to 30-4782. And that's it.
So move.
Second.
All right, discussion. Another piece, question, Clark Colerone.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.